To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which she stands, one nation, and to God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Freeman?
You got all the words right. That was great. All right. So let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. I usually go out of order on this, but go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can you do the roll call, please? Here.
Yes.
All right. Approval of minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Now we're up to item number four, which is a special recognition. It's a motion for resolution. I'm going to turn this over to trustee. You can't. Is mine not working?
His is working. You're good.
Okie dokie. So now you ruined that. There was like a moment and you you ruined it. Thanks. Thanks, Eddie. Thanks. I'm going to turn this over to trustee Kelly and I'll let I'll let you take it from here, sir.
All right. Thanks, Alan. So as many of you guys are aware, we've had an ongoing issue with the On the Green Apartment complex over in the Stillmeadow area. There's been an unequivocal disproportionate amount of crime over there over the last several years. As a township, I feel like we've worked to the best of our ability to curb that within the framework that we have and within our resources and budget. I would say about a year ago that kind of culminated. I think we kind of hit a ceiling with that where, you know, I don't think we could go a whole lot further with the resources and things that we have available here. They expressed that they no longer wanted to saw the value in meeting with the trustees in regards to their 15-point plan, which was, you know, part of that was more stringent background checks, upgrades to the building and property, et cetera. So it was around that time that Mark DeColvi and the prosecutor's office decided to step in, and they have just done an outstanding job. It was a very welcome sight on our part to see them come in and kind of leverage some of the resources and expertise and frankly ingenuity that they have at their disposal to help, you know, remedy and see a more positive direction for this situation. So that's kind of where we stand tonight. I hope Mark DeColvi can come up and talk a little bit more. And it's kind of our purpose is to thank him and the prosecutor's office for all their work toward this situation.
Thank you all very much. I took office in January 2021, but long before that, in knowing being a member of the community, I was an assistant prosecutor from 8907, always maybe has maintained a close relationship with law enforcement. Detective Brewer was killed in February of 2019. We had two more murders there in one incident in November of 2019. And as you know, we had another murder in February of this year. But leading up to when I took office, I was communicating with individuals like Brian Shrive. Brian joined my office in January of this year when I started. He's the lead assistant in my civil department. And Brian, with a few others, Joe Mooney, David Gast, and Angie Kennedy were instrumental in getting this thing running. I told, you know, that's what the boss does. Here's my idea. Here's what I'd like to see. We talked to members of the community, to your to your to your board, to council. We brought in resources from other areas of the of the county, and we determined that we had to do something. So in May, we filed the lawsuit. It's a long, torturous process, as you know, civil litigation might be. We resolved it in August, we think, under very favorable terms. Policing at the complex went up from about three hours a week to 40 hours per week. The ownership must make good faith efforts to sell the property. And that's where the problem is. They're out of state interest. Folks from Utah own this place, and they have continued over the years to really pillage our community by renting these apartments to folks. They don't do background checks. They just care about getting the money in every month, and they don't, they haven't really applied any of their rental income to keeping up the property or to ensuring that safety standards are met. It's unfortunate. A lot of folks who live there are, they're just low income. They've got nowhere else to go, but their families, their families in apartments where bulls are flying around, felony drug transactions occurring, felony offenses of violence and other offenses of violence are occurring. So we think this is a tremendous stride in the right direction. It's not instantaneous. It is going to be a process. But hopefully with the advent of new ownership and new responsibilities and screening of tenants, removing the tenants who are not desirable for our community, we're on the journey to making our community a safer place. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
But before you go, we have something to give.
We do. So yeah, we want to thank you in a kind of more official, formal way. So we have a resolution here. So I guess I go ahead and read this or you want to walk up? Yeah, I wrote it. It's you're going to you can tell that my law degree is coming in hand here. So, all right. So whereas the Claremont County Prosecutor's Office is actively engaged in the prevention of activity detrimental to the safety and well-being of the community by employing a little-known provision of law to force the abatement of nuisances and whereas the St. Andrews On the Green Apartment complex has been a nuisance property and center of criminal activity, which included the tragic shooting and death of the Claremont County Sheriff's Detective Bill Brewer, and whereas Claremont County Prosecutor Mark DeColvi has taken a personal interest in the conditions affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens detrimentally affected by these activities. And whereas Mark DeColvi and his assistant prosecutors intervened to develop an improvement plan, which was negotiated in collaboration with Police Chief Bachman, the Claremont County Narcotics Unit, Fire Chief Wright, and the property owner, under which progress will be monitored and unlawful activities will not be tolerated. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Pierce Township hereby declare their appreciation to Mark DeColvi for his contribution to the welfare and safety of our residents and the community as a whole. So I would like to make the motion.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yeah.
I already had him with two.
You're good. You did the math. You're good. He's going to come down and we'll.
I am honored and thank you again. We continue. We will continue to put forth our best efforts to making sure this problem is rectified. Thank you.
Appreciate everything you have done in your office.
Okay, so now we get to the to the meat of our meeting. We're going to start with departmental celebrations and updates. Let's start off with Chief Bachman in the Police Department.
I don't have anything this this month. I was off this week. It came in for today's meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Fire EMS Chief Wright.
Good evening. You may have noticed during the month, and I just on the last month, we did some live fire training. Thanks for the experience and the knowledge. Live fire is in the later. So we got a couple of days that in. We hope to have it back before the end of the year to do some additional training. Still no update on the Polaris. We're still waiting on them to release the gun and the pricing. The power cup that we ordered back in June just recently came in. So we have an appointment later. This one scheduled for the animals to go over to have that installed, which will be a huge benefit to our staff. Also, Chief Bachman, both of our departments, we worked with the Ridge School staff over the course of several weeks to plan the first ever school staff safety day. So they have teacher service day to dedicate the entire day to school safety to cover a variety of topics. So we did that during the month with some involvement in our groups, which was a fantastic event. There's some pictures from our training. I think there were some pictures from the September 11th memorial event, Commissioner's Hill, on TV, Chief Bachman, I both attended. That's all that happened. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions? Right here now. Let's move on to service streets and cemetery.
Well, the paving just started. The paving program has started. They started with chasing all the curve together. That was, that was bad. They completed that. I just rode around with Mark, the foreman, that will be handling our paving program and rode around with him today. And we got everything marked out for the paving limits and that. So they should be, he couldn't give me a firm date yet on when they were going to be here, but he said it will be soon. They're actually having a meeting tomorrow on their schedules of things. So hopefully I'll hear more by next week.
Yeah.
We've, there's more slide. There's, there's a culvert issue on Holly Ridge. It is, they, they're not your typical culverts. They're really, really deep in the ground and they're going to be very costly to replace. And it would basically not let anybody get in or out of their houses for quite a while if we tried to replace them. So I have gotten some pricing on lining those pipe. That pricing is coming back in around eighty-seven thousand dollars. There's three pipes. As you can see, they're in kind of bad shape. The lining of the pipe will, I mean, the pipe would be like brand new. Basically, they put a new pipe inside of the pipe. So, and it will last much longer than what the steel culverts that they installed originally. But we, there is a grant opportunity for this. And we will be active. There's a motion later to go after the grant for this. The road, the pipes aren't in bad enough shape that the road is going to collapse tomorrow. But it's bad enough that if we don't do something soon, that it's going, it will be an issue later. So you can see they camered, they cleaned them and camered them. And there's a lot of spots where it's, the bottoms are rusted out. With doing that and talking to the people, to the one company, they had suggested that we join this HGAC by its consortium. And it helps. It's kind of like a state bid thing where you get the cheapest. There's a set price and you can get get it done at that at that rate. So we'll be getting the paperwork together to join that as well. So which I talked to Jeremy Evans because we need that letter of recommendation. I've got to get some things put together, get to him, and then he'll get back with me. And then I got to get with with Jeff about moving that speed trailer down there so we can get some traffic counts on that road. Because that that will help increase our chances of getting the grant. So they're, they're pretty overwhelmed right now with getting speed counts because there's a lot of townships asking for this money. So I, he asked if I had any other way to get it. And I said, well, I believe this, then the speed trailer doesn't do traffic counts as well. So, yeah, so I said, I think we have another avenue. So he said, that would be very helpful if you do that. So.
That's good. Anything else? Go on to Parks, Green Space Committee. Done. Oh, yeah.
That's right.
You got away with it too because I forgot.
Good evening. Just a few things from Parks Committee. So actually, John Kohler was approached by a gentleman, Jeff Hornstrom, and some others with him that are offering to, and it's part of the master plan, the disc golf course at Spencer Shank Park. You know, the signs are gone, you know, and that type of thing. But they've come forward and have offered to kind of rework the disc golf course and prove it at no cost to the township.
That's great.
So complete, you know, volunteer effort. They would raise whatever. So complete, you know, volunteer effort. They would raise whatever funds they would need to complete the work. It's not major reconfigurations or anything like that. Just kind of enhancing it. They, I guess, are avid disc golf players. And so, you know, they've got a good feel for what makes a good course. The existing baskets are in good shape, but that is something that had been identified in the master plan that needed to be addressed. So because we're very fortunate that someone has stepped forward to do this, this work. So with that, I mean, we will work with them on, on the plan and trying to keep, you know, things in mind as far as the master plan goes. But we just wanted to, you know, request approval to authorize them to, to go ahead and proceed with that.
All volunteer.
All volunteer, no cost to the township.
Didn't I hear some places there also tied into tournaments and, and could draw that too. It's kind of a fun add-on to the, to the process. So.
Sure.
It's great. Absolutely.
So with it obviously being no cost, I don't know that there's any formal resolution or wire or anything like that, but we just wanted to bring it to you and, and let you know about that.
Yeah, full speed ahead, I guess.
So let's see, next is the ad hoc event group that has formed. We've been trying to work on some events. We had mentioned previously a potential Christmas event. They're targeting Thursday, December the 16th from seven to eight P M. Just some Christmas caroling, tree lighting, you know, at the park, still some things to be worked out as far as where that tree will be. If it'll be over the learning center or in front of the township building. It is assumed that the township would need to provide traffic control and, you know, some light cleanup. Anyway, I wanted to bring that up to the trustees, you know, for your support. You know, or any objections, you know, otherwise we would receive with moving forward with that.
Yeah, I have no, I have no objections. I think that's something that we've needed to do for a while. Same.
See, next you'll see it's a motion that Loretta will present. Kleinger's, we have a proposal from Kleinger's to provide documents for development of the master plan. And Lynn with Kleinger's is here this evening. If you have any questions about the proposal, Loretta will get into more detail on that with the resolution. But just wanted to let you know the Parks Committee supports that. You know, the funding would come out of the COVID funds. And then just last, just reminder, fall cleanup, cleanup day at Grove Park still targeting November the 13th, Saturday from nine AM to one PM. We already have about 11 volunteers lined up from University of Cincinnati, as well as Boy Scouts and you know, John's making plans to, to help with some of the debris removal and mulching of some of the debris. So just wanted to mention that.
That's great.
We're gonna, well, actually, they're gonna bring it, we're gonna stockpile it back in the cemetery for use in the parks. Yes.
So sustaining. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. And thank you to all the, the members of the, of the Parks and Green Space Committee. You guys do a great job. And we really appreciate everything you do for the, for the township. With that, I'm going to move over to planning and zoning, which is Eddie.
So last month in, as far as permitting goes, we saw a small dip in the number of permits compared to the prior month, which was very, very robust. Housing permits remained fairly high as well this month. And one other item that I have is, so obviously Kristin Cannon started for us very recently. And she received two, two very nice compliments. Residents were really happy with her customer service. She's very helpful, kind of went above, went above and beyond doing some extra research and that sort of thing. So that's very much appreciated. She's been a great addition to our team.
And Eddie, Eddie's been forced to sit in on several of my meetings regarding economic development. And I think he's gotten so bored that his eyes are bugging out at this point. So, but I appreciate the, the assistance on all that. Okay, move, are you, anything else?
Couple items on the agenda later on, but nothing, nothing right now.
Okay. Loretta, administration.
All right, thank you. Most importantly, I need to report that Brumke has asked to change the trash collection day for Presswood Place. They have an overload on that day now that there has been so many new homes built in the Presswood Place area. So they would like to move their collection day from Monday to Wednesday. They would be entirely responsible for informing the residents and making those arrangements. They hope to, to make that arrangement to begin November the first. They would like to combine it with other pickups that they already have on a shorter route on Merwin 10 Mile. So that is their request. I think I sent the correspondence and forward to you as well. So unless there's an objection, I would, I, I believe that it's reasonable request that we should accommodate because of the growth in that area. They just can only collect so much trash in an area on a day.
Okay. Do we have any objections to that? I have, I have none.
I do apologize for the inconvenience to the residents. You know, it's hard, change is hard. But it's understandable. I do want to note something that, that John didn't bring up, and that is that Laura Voschowski that handles the indigent burial paperwork, if someone passes away, they have no family to, to claim them. I don't know if people are aware that the township then is responsible for handling the burial of those individuals. If they, if they do pass away in our township and they have no, no other family. So those are generally handled as cremations and the state does have a fund where you can be reimbursed for the cost of those. And I just want to let you know that we did have another one. We've had a few this year already and Laura always pursues a reimbursement for those and she's successful such that I think that she actually advises other cemeteries how to follow the paperwork and how to make those requests because sadly, that's something that, that happens more frequently than it used to.
Yeah.
So that's just something I think that there's mention that, that she does that. I just don't, don't realize that. The other item is talking about the American Rescue Plan funding, rescue recovery. I always get confused. We have been talking about park improvements. We obviously have the park master plan that has identified many needs. As we have also taken responsibility for, for several new parks to us, veteran, the village of Amelia, former village. We have incorporated them into our plan. And we need a comprehensive approach to looking at these parks. So later on the agenda, you will see my request as referenced also by Doug Dressy to have concepts drawn for each of these parks based upon the master plan improvements identified as needs in each park. So we can prioritize those. And then the engineers can actually put dollars to those proposals so we can bring them forward and, and consider them. As I understand it, since park improvements are one of those, that's, that's eligible for that, the planning for those parks, the designing of those parks, as well as the construction implementation is all eligible because of the increased usage of parks that we've seen during this time where COVID's impacted everyone's lives. So if there are any other questions about that proposal, and I just wanted to note, one of the, one of the aspects of this is to offer 3D renderings as a separate task. So we can consider that a later date if we need to drill down, if, if we really need to visualize better just what those parks would look like if we implement certain improvements in certain stages. So that's the background. Then again, I'll be asking for a motion for funding that project later on the agenda.
Well, to some degree, this was also an offshoot of the, of the session we had at Grove Park because I think a couple of residents said, you know, how do, how do these parks, how will they interface? How will they interact? And do we have a, a master kind of plan that we can, that we can look at? And again, this, this work that Kleinger's would do would also hard, would be a harbinger of the next phase of public meeting where we would go back and do that, you know, Grove Park type session. Again, so that people can see what it is that's proposed and add to it, subtract from it and, and give their, give their thoughts. So it's also very helpful to have that kind of graphic display so that people can, can see what it is that we're, what we're proposing. So I think that's a, a good piece. Also to add, when you go after the ARP funds, it does come in handy. You know, they, they will be looking for, as you back up your, your justification for the use of the funds. They'll be looking for, did you do this in a professional manner? Did you, you know, did you look at other options? How did you work through that process? So.
And it is federal money. And that's one of the things we talked about in Parks Committee is we were originally trying to do this in-house on our own, perhaps buying equipment separately, managing it ourselves. We are responsible for following all of the proper bidding requirements, prevailing wage and so on and so forth. That federal money does involve. So we do need to do it properly and document it well.
And having Kleinger's help us with that, I think would be a huge help. But thank you for the background on that. Loretta?
I believe that's all that I have, other than the fact that there are several other opportunities. Actually, there is going to be a meeting of other administrators between Claremont and Hamilton County to talk about ways that those other communities are considering spending these funds. So I'll participate that in that later this month and bring back any other ideas that I hear from those other communities because there are also program elements that we, we really want to flesh out to see how we can perhaps do more to help local businesses. We've talked, Betty and I have talked about facade improvements as well as programs associated with community health.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Do we have anything else we want to?
On that note, Loretta, I think that I've mentioned this before about CPR, reinitiating CPR training for residents and staff. In Green Township where the office is located, they actually, I think, might be using something like that to fund a senior citizen's balance and fall precautions, fall prevention program. So that might be something, a fair number of senior citizens in this township. That might be something to incorporate to at least consider if this kind of educational program is eligible under ARP.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then we'll move on to old business. Seeing none, new business. We'll be kicking off with Debbie.
I request. I request a motion for approval of the payment of the payroll for the month of September in the amount of $593,140.33.
So moved. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis? And Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of September in the amount of $535,668.71.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Campbellis? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nothing else? All right. Chief Bachman, you're up. That's what I thought. When I saw it on the agenda, I was like.
Oh, this one was.
I was like, geez, how many guns do they have over there?
Déjà vu.
Fair enough. Then we'll move on to Chief Craig Wright.
I request a motion to approve the emergency repair of the 2016 Dodge 4500 ambulance to Arnold's in the amount of $5,300.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Only thing I'm going to add is that it is a Dodge. And I believe that you and I, John, had a discussion about. I think I spent $5,000 on my Ford. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Difference is this is. Ooh, and you told me to back off. All right, Chief Wright, you're still up.
I request a motion to approve the purchase of a court account fit tester model 8048T for mobile fire equipment in the amount of $17,925. Noting that this equipment is to be paid for from remaining CARESAC funds and available for all township department's use. I can explain if you need me to.
That would be nice, just so everybody understands what we're talking about.
Yeah, so annually, we have to fit test our firefighters for the SCBA masks that we wear. We also have CBRN masks for biohazard incidents. The police also have those as part of their riot stuff and CBRN events. With COVID, the way that it is, we also have our N95 respirators that we wear. So we have to, to fit test our folks every year. And we typically try to do the police with an antiquated hood that you put on and a a hand pump system that just doesn't work the best. So working with our fiscal officer, we had some remaining CARESAC funds from previous projects. I think from where we had done some not to exceeds when we were ironing out some, some costs. And Debbie was able to work with the state to reappropriate some of those funds. And the fit tester was kind of on our list in the beginning, but as we prior twice, prioritize it dropped off. So this is an opportunity to utilize the rest of those funds. We'll have to send them back and, and purchase a piece of equipment that benefits all of the departments. So it's got the adapters, do the N95s, our SCBA mask, the Millennium gas mask the police have, and gives us the, the ability to do some other respirators if the service department would have a need to fit test for those.
Okay, great. Good job, Debbie.
Well, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Chief Wright, you're still up.
I request a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter paramedic Brandon Buckseath as a full-time member effective October 10th, 2021. And to reclassify him as a part-time member at the established rate effective October 11th, 2021.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
I request a motion to accept the resignation of full-time firefighter paramedic Shayna Strickland effective October 23rd, 2021.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. John?
Service Department Director John Kohler requests a motion to accept the quote of $47,078 for 2021 Ram truck, 3,500. Regular cab, tradesman from, it should say Mark Williams Auto Group. Mark Williams Auto Group.
Well, with the price of trucks, it seems like a good deal.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
We have a motion.
Yes.
Do we have any further discussion? Shouldn't we be, be buying a second one for spare parts?
That would be to get a four.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Please be, pay attention. Yes. You still grumbling about Chevrolets over here? Okay, John, you're still up. Oh, this is where they get the second truck, right?
Yeah.
Spare parts.
This is the spare parts to go on. The Service Department Director John Kohler requests a motion to accept the quote of $10,790 for the 2021 utility bed for the 2021 Dodge Ram 3,500 four drive regular cab tradesman from Mark Williams Auto Group.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. John, you are a busy man. You're up again.
Service Department Director John Kohler requested motion to submit an application to the ODOT Township stimulus program for the Holly Ridge Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Application deadline is November 19th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion on that matter? Did you, no, this is just for the grant program. The, the consortium is a different matter.
There's, there's no cost for that either. So, and it. So, and it will just, it'll be a tool that we could save money on later down the road for any of that, for a lot of different things.
But I think a couple of meetings back, we did get to see what the material is, is that they would be using. And it's pretty impressive. I mean, you know, when they shoot that stuff inside there, that's, it's almost like a new pipe.
It basically comes as like a sock. And it goes in, they, they take and put a resin, they soak it in a resin, and then they shove the sock through the pipe, and then they take like a bladder and blow it up, and then they leave the bladder up for, say, depending on the outside temperature, say for an hour. And then after an hour, it's hard enough, they'll take the bladder out, and then the pipe's there. It's voila.
So we're just in discussion. Okay. All right, so without any further discussion, let's go ahead, roll call on that, please.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, John. Eddie, you're up.
Planning and zoning administrator Eddie McCarthy requests a motion for resolution 2021-030, authorizing a tax abatement to Stonehouse LLC through the Rural Enterprise Zone legislation. I can provide a little background, like
Go ahead.
So the enterprise zone is an economic development tool that enables local jurisdictions to promote job growth and investment through a time-limited tax abatement. And so specifically, and the applicant is here representing Stonehouse LLC, but they are proposing to open a restaurant with an existing 1,200 square feet for which they're going to renovate. And then they also intend on expanding that facility by 1,500 square feet for a total investment of $700,000. They also plan on hiring 36 full and part-time employees over the initial 36-month period. So the specific proposal is a 10-year, 60% property tax abatement on the new investments into the property. And just for reference, the property currently generates about $4,100 in property taxes annually. With the abatement, for instance, the property would then be generating $12,000. And that's even with the 60%. So the abatement is only on the investment, not the underlying what they're paying right now, sort of thing. So if you have any questions, I can answer. And also, Ms. Candace Davidson is here as well, if you have any questions, as well as Scott Gafford from Claremont County Economic Development.
Scott, do you want to come up and just say a few words, correct everything that he said is wrong? Okay. Candace, did you want to come up, do a little sales pitch? You have nothing to add. He was picture perfect, right? Great.
Eddie, could you explain if this fits into a grid pattern to pick that figure for that amount of time? Is that your decision or was that a county decision?
You mean the amount in the request overall?
The 60% for 10 years, yeah. Where did that come from?
That's, those are, those are in line with the parameters permitted by the enterprise zone enabling legislation. And specifically, that was a specific request made by the applicant in order to cover, and essentially make their financial position viable over the period.
But it was approved by the county?
It was reviewed by the county, correct.
Eddie, don't forget that's on
He's larger. You talk over him many times.
Would you speak to the stipulations in the contract that I read, naturally regarding the maintenance of a certain level of employment over what we're not just for, as I understand it?
Yep. Yeah, so essentially, there are a number of targets that are proposed, one of which is the employment, employment number, and then the other one is the investment amount. And so the, the application is part of the abatement. The applicant proposes $700,000 in investment in 36 full and part-time positions. Each year, that there is a committee that reviews and audits all of these various different agreements throughout the county to ensure substantial compliance with the agreement, to ensure that the abatement is actually at the proper level and that there aren't any significant issues arising. Say, for example, an investment that is, instead of 700,000, significantly lower than that number. So that is reviewed every year.
Let's say, for instance, could you explain the stipulations in the agreement whereby, in the event that the employment falls below a certain percentage, what might occur if that were to occur?
Yep, so the general baseline is 75%. So the expectation is that you are hitting at least the 75% or above of that employment level. In the event that the committee determines that you are substantially not, not meeting your obligations, it could, what could occur is that the abatement property tax revenues that were abated would have to be repaid. So that is generally part of the process. And so from here, essentially, so this body is looked upon to make a recommendation to the county. The documents would then go through the Economic Development Office with Claremont County, as well as review through the prosecutor's office, with the Board of County Commissioners making the final decision on that. And then from there, it goes to the Ohio Department of Development.
Now, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to make one. Prior to that, I just want to detail my thought process a little bit before I make that motion.
Sorry, I just assumed.
No, you're fine. Well, before, it's for anybody wondering, essentially, we did do that Red Tiger study, which, you know, at the top of the list, and I think it's intuitive anyway, that, you know, a formal, more formal sit-down restaurant is something that residents, you know, very much desire in our township. And getting that restaurant, you know, there's a competitive, you know, bidding process. If we had 50 sit-down restaurants looking to locate in our township, then we wouldn't have to, you know, give any perks to get them here. But in my opinion, I think it's important that we are kind of mindful of what we're looking at. And we're looking at, again, we're still going to get that base tax revenue. We're still going to get 40% of the additional improvements on that property. And after 10 years, we're going to get 100% of the increased value of that property. So, you know, that is kind of my thought process, and I would like to make the motion to approve that abatement. And that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
And I'll make some comments too. I wanted to study the proposal and a little bit more detail before I committed to it. And I did, it was very helpful to review the proposal in its entirety. And Eddie, thank you for the clarification and explanation. So, you know, my overall gut feeling is regarding tax abatements, you know, for the purposes of distressed areas, distressed properties, lighted area developments, I think it's a pretty good development tool. We have a prime piece of property like this. I wasn't so sure in the beginning, however, in looking at some of the potential for employment for folks in the area, the way the contract was written, and as Nick suggested, the potential for this to be that catalyst for a further development along 125 through Formulville to the Miners. I thought this was, you know, really in totality, a project that made sense, and I don't think we could not support it. I see this as a good initial step in going forward and developing 125 corridor and projection of the David township. And this, the quality of this restaurant, in my mind, you know, would be consistent with what we want to see happen in the area. So we wish you the best of luck. And I would second the motion.
All right, so hold on. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Dennis?
Yes.
Please come on up. Come up to the microphone. Yeah.
Sanus Lukin, 3600 Dunes Court, couple of questions. By granting a tax abatement, does that not also negatively impact the funding for the schools?
Actually, it does not. Go ahead. Eddie, you discussed the tax implications. And if you could just repeat, the 4,100 currently is the gross tax revenue off the property? And what's, what would be the tax revenue after the abatement?
So, under this proposal, the tax, the school district, so the school district currently is getting $6,500 a year, approximately, as their share. So, once the EZ expires, they will be getting $12,382 estimated. So, the school district, the request is not for anything greater than what the enabling legislation allows. The school district is also notified during the process, so they have the opportunity to provide comment and object, and provide feedback and that sort of thing during the process as well.
But the end result is, even after, even after the EZ abatement is instituted, you go from being a residential tax rate to a commercial tax rate. So that would ultimately increase the gross tax revenue off of that property.
That is correct.
Also, for the attendees here, if you would give them the full amount of what this tax abatement we're giving away over those 10 years?
Well, let's also remember too, and let's do that. Go ahead. Tell them what the 10-year tax abatement comes to.
It's $109,269.29.
Okay, so now, but now, add into this, Dennis, that without that tax abatement, you do not get the $700,000 investment from the, from the restaurant. So you would not get that tax but for this incentive.
I understand that, and I welcome, I want to thank the people for being here, and I thank you for letting me to bring this to your attention. The thing is, I'm anti-tax abatements. It's ruined the city of Cincinnati. They've given away $38 million, and only transfers that tax liability to the property owners. And I just hope that this is not the tip of the iceberg for Pierce Township. To go down that road by doing this, you're setting a dangerous precedent by giving this tax abatement this one time, because there's going to be people coming in with their hands open and wanting more. Property taxes are going out of sight. Our property taxes have increased 43% in 15 years. And it's ridiculous, but we're giving away $109,000. We don't have the industry here to generate revenue for the township and to be giving away funds. I just, I cannot support a trustee that supports this now or in the future. I'll just go on that. I thank you.
If I could make, I'll speak to that a little bit. So, Danny, I appreciate your input very much. So I just think that it comes down to a little bit of like game theory, and it's situational. So just to say, I don't support abatements, or I do, generally speaking, you have a situation like this. And again, I think it comes down to how many businesses, how many restaurants are clamoring to get in that 125 corridor? How many formal restaurants are wanting to get into that space? And if we don't have any, you're looking at kind of spurring on economic development. Now, we have like 50, you know, nice restaurants that want to get into that space. And of course, we don't need to offer a tax abatement, but this is tax revenue that's not going to exist more than likely, could be a deal breaker, as I understand it, if we don't give some kind of abatement to entice the initial steps in economic development. And once the economic development train gets rolling, and the snowball goes, you know, starts to move, I feel like we'll get more stuff and maybe less abatements might be necessary, no offense. But, you know, I think there is other communities, perhaps you could go in, and the abatement is a way to encourage something that we have none of currently on 125.
I can make one quick clarification. So currently, approximately $2,400 are being generated for the schools presently right now. With the abatement, that number will go to 6,500. After all is said and done and the abatement goes away, that number goes to 12,000. It's also really important to know that this being a restaurant, it does not generate, as opposed to homes, for instance, there are no new students in the schools. So regardless, your initial property tax amount of 2,400 going to 6,500 with no additional new students needs, should also be taken into account.
And frankly, it could be nothing. So if we don't approve this tonight, and Candace decides, you know, I can go somewhere else and get an abatement, or I just, Pierce Township isn't the best place, then she leaves, and we're stuck with the base revenue that we have now, which is less tax revenue than we're going to generate with the 60% abatement.
Well, I think at the end of the day, Dennis, your point is well-taken about using abatements. I think you have to use them wisely, and you have to use it and think of it from a business perspective. Is that investment worth the return? And what is the return on that investment? And as I looked at the plan, as I looked at the, at the proposal, it's a low-risk, high-reward investment for the township and the residents. So overall, I think there's going to be a return on that investment that's worth doing. So, I mean, that's, that's my view. I understand your position, and I understand. The only thing I disagree with in your estimation of what ruined the city, so many things ruined the city of Cincinnati, not just abatements. There's a lot of stuff down there beyond just abatements, but your point is very, very well taken. And working through it from a business perspective, I just think this is, this is a deal that makes sense for the township. So while we disagree, I hope you understand where we're coming, where I'm coming from, where the, where the other two are coming from. So, so with that, do we have any other discussion on the matter? You got to come up here.
Stan Shadwell, Ledgewood Lane. I have a question. You said 36 full-time or part-time employees. Do we have a number for full-time employees? Because if I, you know, I'm used to dealing with people that tend to take advantage of stuff. I could have 20 full-time employees, or I could have two, a whole mass of part-time employees, which doesn't really do a lot for people.
16 full-time.
16 full-time and 20 part-time. So there is a number in the agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's stated in the agreement.
Okay, good.
Okay. Anything further? Candace, you still don't want to say anything? Still, still don't want to?
I've got one quick question. I was looking on the tax map. I thought the lake was going to go with the property. It did not. That's okay. Okay, you just bought the little wedge, in other words.
Yes.
Okay.
It still belongs to the Grimes family. My suspicion, yes. If you want it, I mean, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure they'll hook you up. All right, if there's no further discussion, then we can do roll call.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Eddie, you're still up.
I request a motion directing staff to initiate the process to review and update the Pierce Township land use plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Eddie, you are still up.
I request a motion to direct staff to call for volunteers to fill vacancies on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have one full appointment that is appointed to a five-year term and two alternate positions coming due. The two-year term, or the two alternates serve two-year terms. And also of note, the incumbent, incumbents to the positions will continue to serve until their replacement is appointed.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Here. You got to come up here. If you want to talk, you got to come up here. Oh, you, because you didn't, because you didn't want to come up here, you're just not going to talk. Oh, okay.
I'm not coming all the way up for that.
All right, roll call please. Yes. Now, see, I'm going to get in trouble after the meeting, because Loretta is going to say, you didn't make, you didn't make Doug come up to the microphone. And I'm going to be in trouble for that.
And it's the public that argues or complains after the meeting that they weren't able to hear properly. So we're trying to do this for everyone, not for us. We'd be happy to whisper up here.
Because I threw her under the bus. She has to come back for that.
For the public good.
But the arguments between you and I, request is from the public.
All right, so we got Loretta, you're up now.
I am. I request a motion to approve an agreement I am. I request a motion to approve an agreement with Clangers Engineering to provide master plan design services for Grove, Spencer, Shank and Lucas Corner Parks. The amount of $9,900 to be paid from ARP funds. And just noting, as I said before, um, there are, there's an alternative, uh, option to add 3D rendering to later date.
Okay, we have somebody here from Clangers. Do we, you want to come on up and introduce yourself?
My name is Lynn Nish, was with the Clangers Group and I lead our landscape architecture team.
Thank you. Loretta, do we have any, you know, is there anybody that would like to ask any questions? I know the parks and green spics, green space folks. Already had, uh, had this discussion, so. Stan, she's there, so I don't know what to do. I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss. Please come up. She, she yielded, so you can come on.
It's not a question for her, it's a question for you.
Yes.
Um, you're going to spend 10 grand on a study. Would it not make more sense to spend the 10 grand on the actual work on the park? I mean, I know it's free money for crying out loud, but I mean, let's be realistic. It's 10 grand. To me, you know, I, I know Clangers have been around here for ages and ages, but it's another 10 grand. That you guys want to spend just to get a study. Could we not look at the things ourselves? Don't we have a park committee? Don't we have people from the areas that could look at the parks and go, it would be nice if we had X. Or do we just, because it's free money, we need to spend it?
Yeah. So he walks away. I'm going to answer your question. You, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, the, the, the key here is yes, the Parks Committee can do that and they have done that in the past. This is a layer of compliance. And so having Clangers, um, working through this, it helps us with compliance. Because we don't want to have, um, the federal government coming back to us in six months or a year saying, what you guys did in your committee. Wasn't correct. And we need you to pay $300,000 back in ARP funds that we no longer have because we put it into the ground. So this is actually more, it's less of $10,000 just to get a, get a map. And more $10,000 to make sure we have in, in insurance policy. That we've done the compliance work necessary that will pass the, uh, the federal threshold. I'm, I'm with you. I'm with you. I'm with you. But you see what, you see what we're up against.
Can, can I speak a little bit to that too? And then I will pass it to Lynn as well. So there's a layer of complexity as in trying to do this comprehensively. Because these funds are available to be spent until 2024. So we're not just looking at. The first playground and we all look at the plan and we agree and we pick the components out of a book. I mean, there has to be proper insulation, proper playground surface, um, recreational, um. Certification standards that have to be met that we're not. Experts in. So there are many layers as well as. Not just looking at that first playground for a hundred thousand, looking at the whole master plan because we have excellent documents now to be able to. Tell the consultants what components we want, but we still have to pick and choose. And it will give us a better tool to be able to look at it together and put elements in, take elements out that really have them. Give us accurate cost estimates for all of those components. So if you could speak to that and tell me if I'm. Explaining that well or not, if you could add some detail.
Yeah, I'll take the cue from before about the picture perfect. I mean, that's a good point. Um, I, I think it makes sense to have us do the, the work because it. Looks at the whole park altogether and how, like you mentioned, the playground, um, making sure it has proper drainage. And all of that kind of stuff that goes in with it and works with new parking and all the other elements. What also it does is, um, when we do an opinion of probable cost, what that does is helps you, um. Be able to phase about what you should do first and help decide what makes sense to do first. But also doing this plan and providing renderings, if you decide to do that, helps you get future grants to be able to get dollars, to be able to implement these. Studies and, um, I think you mentioned it earlier, but with the, um, with the COVID. Issue, there are grants out there to get people to get outside. And if you have your master plan done and, uh, perspective renderings. You can get additional funds to get the, uh, documents, uh, the, the, um, improvements built.
Okay. You guys have any questions?
I just want to remind that the, you know, all the people of the community that the, uh. The Township Parks Committee is all volunteers. All the work that we have done over the years and developing master plan, meeting with. People in the community is all volunteer work. You know, we have done a lot of work over the years. Um, there was no cost to the township. We will continue to do that and will continue to do that. But I think that spending $10,000, it's going to be paid for by ARP funds. You know, we don't have the resources to do it for free. To put it on paper. On a plan. That's my own comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doug. Point taken.
I will add that having them do it takes a lot of, a lot of workload off of, off of the staff. Itself on putting these bid documents and everything together when we do go to. To put this out. They handle all of that. So you're spending the 10,000 or $9,000 and. But you're kind of saving it on, on some of it on the back end out of salary because you were able to work on other things.
Right. Michelle.
I am offended by that comment. I have volunteered so many hours out of my life to the community where I live. To expect me to go and research swings and slides and gravel and concrete. Get prices submitted to John and John go, can't do that. It's not compliant. How many hours out of my personal time have I wasted? To gather all that information when I can go right to them and have them build me a plan. And I can go off of that plan. How many people went to Home Depot and bought wood to build a house? You didn't. You had blueprints. You had a surveyor come out. They did their work. That's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. A rebuttal?
My point is, it's like the other free money we got where we didn't know what to do with it. We're building the shed out there in case. Um, Jeff finds something he needs to store away for a future case because we had free money that we needed to spend. And this is a part of the same blown away free money that the government's doing, that it's giving to us. If we didn't have the free money, we wouldn't be spending the 10 grand. Uh, you know, and, and that's the point. I appreciate the fact that people do this work for nothing. I've been on zoning for ages and ages. I've been on other committees from the township where I don't get paid, so I understand that. But this to me, you know. I, I'm sorry. And that's the reason why I called it free money.
Hold on, hold on. Do we have no plan when we, when we spent the CARES Act money? I'm talking to Chief Wright. Was there no plan? We just willy-nilly just found things to spend it on or did we? Have a, a concerted strategy to use that money to pay for the things that we knew we were going to need down the line. So we could take pressure off of our, our, our. Our levies. Is that correct? What did you buy with it? The, the wasted things that you bought with it?
We bought turn up here.
Which is used for what? Yeah. And what else did you buy with it?
Work radios. What disinfectant equipment for ambulances and stations. Made the improvements to this room.
So, so if you didn't do those, if you didn't pay for those things with CARES Act money, where would that money have come from? From, and where does your budget come from? Which took pressure off of the levy, which means that the levy can add more years to it as best we can. So it was not willy-nilly. It was not just, we just had money. We needed to spend it. These were, these are priority issues. That, you want to tell me this? You and your colleagues said that you didn't like our microphones because you couldn't hear. You didn't like the fact that we weren't like Batavia Township because we didn't have, we didn't have. Gadgets so people could see. We used that money so that we could upgrade this room, including the chairs and this, and this audio visual equipment. Those were the things that as a community you wanted to see happen and we were able to make it happen and we didn't take it out of budget. We saved money from our key resources. So that we could utilize those funds. Now, do I think those funds are a waste of money? You bet. Do we need to spend $5 trillion? No. But at the end of the day, if we had the opportunity to, to use those resources. And we use them with a strategy and an approach that was used to help you as a taxpayer and not have to pay more taxes. Then hell yes, we're going to use that money. We're going to do it twice on Sunday because that's what we owe to you. As a taxpayer and that's what we did. We used a strategy and to say that we did not is, is a disservice to this staff. Who worked their asses off to try to put that, put that plan in place. And, and, nope. Thank you. You may.
I empathize completely and I agree with you when it comes to the free money from the government. I think, uh, the current administration is driving this economy, this country into the drain. But I don't agree with the global concept of the government giving, giving, giving. They're giving away fish and not teaching people how to fish. So conceptually with that part of it, I must say, I agree entirely, but I do, uh, want to emphasize that. Somebody will get this money if we don't get it and use it. And that's why I, you know, I do support it and I do support Doug. And Michelle and my goodness, the countless hours and effort that they've put in. I mean, I look at Doug's reports whenever I, he sends them to me. I always send him back an email. And I say, thank you for sending it because I look at the amount of work that's involved in that. And I think, gee, these people aren't getting paid a dime. And I appreciate it, you know, from, you know, here to there and everywhere. So thank you all for all the work you do. But conceptually stand with the federal government part of this. I, I couldn't agree with you more. Um, and. Um, thank you for letting me say that.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll make them. Uh, I think I.
I think there was a motion made. Okay. So we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll make it if I didn't.
I will second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? I think we talked it in the ground. Um, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Loretta, you're still up.
Thank you. Well, related to COVID impacts again, um, just to preface this one a little bit. That, you know, when we come to this further discussion, I think each department head can speak to an instance where, where this was needed. So. The motion, uh, request is to allow flexibility in the use of sick leave time due to COVID impacts requiring quarantine and causing needs for convalescent care and childcare. And the employees immediate family. So our general personnel policies would not allow this level of flexibility. But we continue to see the impacts on families. We continue to have children sent home from school. Whether they have symptoms or not, they're not permitted to attend the classroom and then a parent does need to stay home. Some of our employees are able to work from home. And that can be accommodated in that way, but otherwise they, uh, need to have. Leave time that's more flexible use of sick leave than our policy would otherwise allow, for instance. I will say that this is, this is a first step toward additional steps that we are going to look at. That will also assist our employees with these kinds of issues. Um, so. That's the motion I have made and further discussion can come from other departments.
And if I could, this wasn't a first for us. Back when we declared the emergency at the start of the pandemic, this was one of the items that was in that initial. Legislation that we did. And then once it was rescinded. Um, it's not been in place and as time's gone on, we've seen a bigger challenge for some of our staff.
We'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Loretta, this will, uh, cause renegotiation of union contracts.
This is just allowing administrative flexibility. The department heads will determine when it's appropriate and it is, it is not to be written into the union contract. This is an understanding that there are circumstances under which this will be deemed appropriate per department.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Loretta?
Thank you. Uh, the next two resolutions are related and at this point I'd like to pause a moment and say how much I'm going to miss Adele from Batavia Township. Um, she's been handling the, the land sales contracts on the Batavia Township side of the road. And then we've been more involved in the contracts. That are on the Pierce Township side of the road, especially since there are zoning questions and so on and come. There are two parcels that, uh, were, uh, formerly owned and by the village. Um, on Charmley, 64 and 66 Charmley. So there are, uh, there's one adjacent property owner interested in, in one of those. And then, uh, there is a, um, a home builder that's interested in the other. So Batavia Township has already taken action on both of these to approve them. So the first, I request a motion for resolution 2021 dash 031. Authorizing sale of township real estate in the former village of Amelia located at 64 Charmley in Batavia Township.
Which property is that?
64 Charmley.
Yeah, I mean, where is it?
Oh, it's in Batavia Township.
Oh, okay. So we just have to turn the key to, to authorize it to.
Correct. We, this is vacant land that was formerly owned by the village. That we are allowed to dispose of. We have no public purpose and we already declared that we had no public purpose.
Batavia is already approved, is it?
Yes.
Okay, I motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on it? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. And then the second. Parcel is, uh, motion for resolution 2021 dash 032. Authorizing sale of township real estate in a former village of Amelia. Located at 66 Charmley in Batavia Township.
Where is that?
It's between 64. It's between 64 and 62.
I'll make the motion.
It's across from Craig's house.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Other business, the most important issue of the night. Go ahead. Loretta, you want to tee this one up for us?
Oh, well, I, this was already discussed at the County Township Association meeting. So. Um, the recommendation that came from that meeting was for. Trick or treat night to be held October 31st from 6 to 8 p.m.
Do we need to take action on that or are we good to go?
I, I think that it will be fine if you wanted to confirm that. Um, we already put it on the calendar. I knew that the township had recommended it. But we'll, we'll send out a.
What if we wanted to go, what if we wanted it to be on like the 28th or something?
And you can change it tonight.
Bonnie can't kick me from there, but she'll throw a shoe. Um. I have, uh, I have no problem with that. Do you need, do you, do we need a motion or do we, the shoe either?
They did make a motion at the Township Association meeting where some of you were. So I, you know, I think it's fine. Go ahead and make a motion.
So do we have a motion to have Halloween, October the 31st from 6 to 8 p.m.?
Yes, second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We're up to public comment, open floor discussion. All right. Hearing none, we're up to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
No.
I, I think prosecutor DeColby, Commissioner Bachelor, prosecutor Shriver should get an extra award because they sat through the entire meeting.
We have a motion, second, to adjourn, roll call please.
Nick.
I did.
I seconded.
Yes.
Yes.
We.
That was record time. Wow.